Call this meeting of the Neighborhood Subcommittee to order. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Getchea.
Here.
Council Belangia.
Yeah.
Council Janess.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Tonight, we are here to discuss, one, the combined sewer overflow issues in the Douglas Road and Windward Road area. The second topic will be upgrading to Colley Stadium Complex. And the third topic would be update to the solid waste and recycling. We don't see anybody here from the Colley Stadium piece, so we're going to move up to recycling after we talk about the CSOs in Douglas Road and Windward. So I'll turn over the floor to Waste Water Executive Director, Aaron Fox. Aaron.
Thank you, everyone. Thank the committee for allowing us to come here and to review this project. If it's acceptable, could we do a presentation?
Absolutely. Yep, please.
So, yeah, my name is Aaron Fox, Executive Director. With me here today is Evan Walsh.
Yes, hello. My name is Aaron Fox, Executive Director. Well, with me today is Evan Walsh, the Engineering Manager for the facility, and he'll be running the slide deck. And so what I'm going to review today is like the cause of the problems at Douglas and Windward, and also the basic details and the timeline of our flood storage project that we have there. And so to kind of get into the basics of it, if I want to go forward slide. So that area is serviced by what we call a combined sewer. So just like our CSO stations, what a combined sewer refers to is there's one sewer line in the street. That one sewer line is taking both sanitary flows, that's a flow coming from houses in the area, and during regular dry weather, that flows to the treatment facility for treatment. But then what happens is during wet weather, all the storm drains, all the roof leaders in the area are also tied to that same pipe. And so during heavy storms, during, this can cause flooding events, this can cause sewer surcharging in the area because there's not enough capacity within that line in the area. And this can cause CSOs. But in this particular neighborhood, it comes up as overflows at Douglas Road, at Douglas and Windward. And so what that area looks like, you know, just to kind of go over where we're having that issue. The main sewer that serves this area is the, was constructed about 90 years ago in the 30s, that runs down Douglas Road. And so that neighborhood wasn't as built up as much as it is now. And so like more houses have been built. It handles all the dry weather flow. But during rainstorms, especially with the rainstorms we've been having lately, last summer was historic in the city. Seventeen point five, seven inches of rain just from June to July in 2023. I mean, that's some of the most rain we've seen. I think it was almost like a hundred year record for the city. And so like as we approach this project, we're looking to make sure we address that level of rain and those type of issues. And so we had multiple, we call it 20-year storms within that period. It's worth noting, too, that there is some drainage within that area. And so that is the blue lines, which you also see, that serves the Colley Stadium, the Janus Rink, and those go to the wetlands at Clark Road, that goes over into Tooksbury. And so what we've seen is that wetlands is that capacity. So if we were to add more flow to that wetlands, we would actually cause that to back up into the backs of people's yards and properties. And so what we're doing is constructing a tank. So the overflow, instead of flooding onto the street, will flood into this, will fill this tank and then get pumped back to the treatment facility to get treated after the rainstorm ends. And so like what does that look like as a problem in the neighborhood? I mean, this is well documented. People in the neighborhood talk about this. So the lowest part of the neighborhood, the part where we see a lot of this flow, is happening like between Douglas and Windward, 35 Windward Road. So what you see, you see that bubbling on these pictures that's coming up in the middle of the street. So what that is, is that's actually the sewer overflowing. There's so much rain coming down the sewer. The two middle pictures on the right-hand side, one's the bottom of Donald Terrace, and the other is the bottom of, I think it's like Kearney Drive. And there's like flooding water flooding down into that area during last summer. I mean, it can get waist deep in that area. And so those are the types, I mean, that's the size of the project we're looking at and the types of the rain we're looking to address. So what the utility did is hired an engineer. They came out, they studied the problem. We have level centers installed. We also did a study of the sewer shed. And then they came up with what a solution would look like, and they designed what we call a 25-year storm tank. And so just to give you some rough financial numbers, this is roughly a 17.5, estimated 17.5 million dollar project, partially funded at $3.5 million from ARPA funding. We're in the bid process, and we're moving towards being on contract for the end of January. So to go through some of the details of the project, I'm going to pass it over to Evan to go through some of like the basic details of that construction, including the timeline.
Hello, everyone. I'll go quickly through the design, the layout, the schedule of the storage tank, and how it's going to operate. So I'll...
Yep.
Good. Okay. So the tank, the final design of the tank is 1.8 million gallons. That's going to be sized for a 25-year storm. And by a 25-year storm, we mean close to a five, six-inch storm over a 24-hour period or a two-inch storm over a one-hour period. So a pretty significant storm. And as Aaron said, last year's storms were only, were close to a 20-year recurrence interval. So this is designed to handle those types of storms for the future. So this is going to be the long-term plan for the sanitary sewer overflows in the area. So the way the tank will work is on Douglas Road, there's going to be a structure that will divert flow into that storage tank, which is broken up into five different cells. During construction, and I'll go more into that on the next slide, during construction, the red line that's outlined, that's the construction fencing. So we will be taking up close to 40 to 50% of the parking lot during construction. We're going to temporary stripe the other half that we're not doing to try to maximize parking there. We'll get around 171 spaces as is. And we're in conversations with the Holy Ghost to utilize their parking during the football games and to try to make sure that we have adequate parking during larger events that are occurring at the Colley Stadium. After the tank is built and the ground's filled back in, the tank construction, we'll be digging a hole roughly 30 feet deep in some areas. So pretty sizable construction going on. Once we finish the tank, we put, that's buried underground, we're going to be paving the entire parking lot. We're working with EPD now to try to gauge what they want for the design, if they want some traffic islands to pretty much have traffic flow, not cut across the parking lot. That's what we're working with now. That, we don't have a final design for the parking, that will be included at the end of the project. And the schedule for the tank and how the tank will actually work, kind of on a cross-section view. So right now, the project's out to bid, and the bid closes in mid-October. We will start construction groundbreaking in the spring, around April timeframe. It's an 18-month construction period, so they have a completion date in fall, around November of 2026, and then the final paving activities will take place in 2027. So the realized benefit to the residents for sanitary sewer overflow relief will be in the fall of 2026. And the way the tank will work is I have three images, kind of for three different scenarios for the tank, and this is a cross-section. So going back real quick, the structure you'll see from right to left is the Douglas Road to the tank and the parking lot. So then in the diversion structure itself, which is the box all the way to the right, there's a red line, which is indicating almost a wall in essence. So during dry weather flow, all the sewer will stay inside the sewer, the sewer line, and go to the treatment plant for full treatment. Once it starts raining, the equivalent of a three-month storm, which is a heavy drizzle, that's when the tank will start being utilized. So the tank will go over that, or the flow will go over that red line into the wall, which is the second image, and will fill the first two cells. We do this to try to minimize the maintenance activities for wastewater staff. So anything under a two-year storm, which is equivalent of a little over an inch in an hour or three inches in 24 hours, only the first two cells will fill. That will be stored in that tank, and then after the event ends, it'll be pumped back into the sewer system for treatment at the treatment plant. And then in heavier rainstorms, two, two years to 25 years, it'll fill all five cells. So it'll go into the first two cells. As those rise up, it'll go into the last three cells. And the image doesn't show it, but closer to a 25-year storm, the tank will become, all five cells will be completely filled, and then that will slowly drain back into the sewer system after the end of the storm over 24 to 48 hours. And in terms, since the benefit's only going to be realized in 2026, the wastewater utility has come in front of the council before and continues to offer the sewer backup reimbursement program. We've had some interest in it, and the application deadline's November 1st to take a part of it as part of ARPA funds. The utility's looking into continuing the program after ARPA funds are complete, but we don't have confirmation whether that will continue or not, but we're looking into it. Any resident that is interested in the program that's had sewer backups in, in the past or think they might have, or in areas that are prone to sewer backups, please reach out to the wastewater utility. The full program details are on the main page of our website, and the contact information for the person running the program is listed on the slide. Tim Brinkman.
Thank you. Do you guys have any handouts? Do you have this on handout, or could you send it to us on a...
Yeah, we can send it. I don't, I don't have it available.
Okay, I just would like the public who are here to be able to have a copy of it also. But I do want to recognize, Council Noon is here also, Council Yim and Council Mercy are all here today. So what we'll do right now is we'll open it up, they'll open the floor up to any of the people in the audience who want to speak, if there's a resident or anybody wants to speak. And then after that, I'll open it up to the councilors who are here. If they don't have anything to speak, to say, then we will certainly... Does anybody want to speak or ask any questions? Just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Lynn Daly, 35 Windward Road, Lowell, Mass. I'm very excited that this project is moving forward. It will fix a CSO problem that has been evident for over 64 years. We can thank City Councilor Ed Kennedy and the previous director of wastewater, Mark Young, for making it happen. When Mr. Young retired, he told me Aaron Fox would see it through. And Aaron Fox did see it through. I also want to thank everyone who works for the wastewater utility, especially the crews that respond to residents in a crisis. They know what they are doing. They often work through difficult circumstances and are always pleasant. If the city of Lowell doesn't have one already, I think we should have an annual wastewater professionals appreciation day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Do any of the councilors want to... Council Mercy?
I'm very grateful because I know the people that live there. And if you saw the presentation, the target was 35 Westland Road, and that is Lynn Daly's property. So thank you, Lynn, for coming down here. Persistence does pay off. She's always been here for this issue. So thank you for addressing it. I'm very grateful.
Council Belangia.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron, I want to thank you for coming in today. You and your staff did a phenomenal job. As Council Mercy stated, this is long overdue. I know, we heard the testimonies last fall at the Riley School of the flooding and the sewage backups. I mean, a lot of these homes in this area, including Ms. Daly who spoke, went through "hell," quote unquote. And this relief is long overdue. So it's good to see. Now, look, back to the funding. Is this entirely ARPA-funded or is partially? What's the deal there?
Yeah, so this, this is a high priority project for, for the utility. And so it is partially funded by ARPA. It's an estimated 17.5 million total. And then the ARPA funding is going to be roughly 3.5 million of that.
Well worth it. Well, money, money well spent, and I commend the council for making this a top priority and your staff. But very descriptive on the presentation, really don't have, it's pretty much cut and dry. But I would like, as the chairman spoke to, some, some handouts on this packet, if we could. I do want to hit the district, hit those homes that were adversely affected, and let them know that, you know, relief is on the way. So, and to the check valve, that, these residents also qualify for that, correct? It's a $5,000 grant. Maybe, maybe Kevin, you can elaborate on that a little bit more and explain what that does. And, because I do have handouts that I've already been handing out in the district as well. So we want these folks to take advantage of these programs and these grants that are there. I don't think any of us like to see grant money go unutilized. So I have begun going, going door to door with handouts and contact information. So, you know, these residents can, it may not be the best fit for every home, as I've spoke to some of the residents. But in some cases, it'll help, it'll help immensely. So now tell me a little bit about this program, how the check valve works, just for the, you know, the folks at home, if you could, please.
Yeah, definitely. So what the check valve provides is relief from people who are like suffering from flooding related to stormwater, right? So, so if you have a resident or a piece of property that is like, you're getting sewer backups during storm, what the check valve will do will help mitigate that. So it's not for, if you have other issues with your sewer line, but if you're having this type of like flooding into your basement during storm events, we'll send somebody out, we'll help, we'll help the resident go through the process of the reimbursement. And so that's a, so that's a $5,000 reimbursement. It's ARPA-funded in that program. We're trying to get all the applications in by the first and then process them all before the end of the year.
Okay. Great stuff. It's greatly appreciated. And again, I'll continue to be out there to these homes in the course of the next week or so, until I get everybody. So they need to know about this, and I'll do my due diligence, and hopefully they take advantage of it. And I know you and your staff will be there to assist them. So thank you very much for all your hard work on this. Appreciate, greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the folks who came down to present. Aaron, the engineer, I appreciate you being here. There's a lot of good information here. I just had a couple of quick little questions. One is, what is the expected service life of this tank? How long before we have to either replace it or something like that?
So the tank itself, I mean, it should last decades. There is maintenance required with it. So like with any sort of like sewage that flows into a structure like this, there's going to be some maintenance involved in removing like whatever debris's build up in that. And so like as part of the design, we've kind of formed a plan to go out there and clean that. And then like as we use it, we'll determine like what that cleaning frequency is. But the structure itself should last, and the connection to the sewer should last decades.
Okay, great. That was...
Generational solution.
Awesome. That's, that's good to hear. I just wanted to make sure everyone can dig up the ground, put this in, and have to replace it in 10 years or something like that. And then when the water ends up in the tank, is there manual effort required by the wastewater team to make sure it pumps itself out, or is it all pretty much automatic?
So there'll be level sensors within the tank. It could be done manually or, you know, or automatically. We have a SCADA system, so we could potentially see that via the SCADA system. And yeah, so after the storm, that's just a, like a small series of pumps that'll pump it over the course of 24 to 48 hours, you know, and prepare it for the next storm.
Great. So if something were to, were to go wrong in that water, were to sit in that tank, you would, you'd be aware of it because of the sensors, right? That was my concern. Great. Thank you very much.
I just have a couple of questions. Is there any smell associated with it?
It's all, we don't expect any. It's all underground. It's not going to stay there very, very, very long. It's going to be pumped out within 24 hours. It shouldn't have any, like, I would assume it's not going to have any more smell than the regular sewer system would in the area.
Just, just to speak of that as well, there's flushing gates on that. So at the end of the storm, it's going to flush any of the debris that's stuck at the bottom. So there will be a small air vent pipe in the stadium, but there should be limited to no odors associated with the tank.
So one of the things that I think Council Belangia may have hit on is that, for my purpose, I think that we should do a Saturday morning neighborhood meeting over at the Riley School and maybe pass out flyers to the neighborhood saying, okay, we're going to have this meeting. Last time we did it, it was overwhelmed over there with people. So I just think that that's the best way to reach everybody and maybe have all the flyers all made up with your presentation and do the presentation in the neighborhood. Because I think that this meeting won't see as many people as it should over there, and it won't hit the targeted audience that we really need to get to, to understand. Because the backflow unit should no longer be needed once this is in place. So it's not something that you should run out and put in your home if you're not getting experience in flooding. Now, as Council Belangia was looking for was, you know, the explanation to what a backflow does. A backflow basically only supports water coming back from the infrastructure. So if your basement's flooding because there's water coming in from the walls, that's not going to have anything to do with the backflow. So there's, it's basically designed because of the sewer systems, that capacity. In your home, the water flows one way out, your sewage flows one way out. But when the sewage is starting to come back the other way, a backflow is designed to have a flapper in it that will stop that from coming back into your home. So I think that's important, that we try to reach out to the neighborhood and say, okay, if you're really not at this, don't incur this expense, because, just correct me if I'm wrong, do the neighbors have to actually purchase this first and ask for reimbursement? So that's a hardship on a lot of people as it is already. And I think we all can agree on that, that when you're looking for plumbers and everything, and they know you're in need, the price goes up and there's, there's higher cost. And on my end, I always thought that the city should have procured somebody to do that for them and paid the cost to put them in, if you saw that there was a need after going through the process with you. But be that as it may, it is what it is, and this is the way it goes. And some people just can't afford to throw these backflows in at this time, whether, and if they can't afford it, is there another mechanism to help them get payment upfront to pay for it? Or is that not something that can be done?
Right now, it's set up as a reimbursement program. So, and then like I said, we'd, we'd look to extend that program. We're discussing that. And so I don't know about necessarily payment upfront right here at this meeting. I can get back to you. But right now, it's set up as a reimbursement program through, through, through ARPA. Also, the neighborhood meeting is a great idea, and we can also put that on the website and so provide that people, information.
Yeah, I think we should set up a meeting in the neighborhood as soon as possible, but give people obviously enough time to plan it. One thing that you said that was really interesting to me, and tonight we have a motion about, you know, infrastructure in the city and building upon it without having any of the tests done, and how that can affect other neighbors. And I think it's important to understand that, that yes, building is nice, but the infrastructure has to support it, or this is going to happen in multiple, multiple places as we start to do these things. So we really have to have strong policies in place that say, and I think you would agree with that, because now you're, we're using all your resources, Ms. Daly said, on this, when, you know, we should have used them back in the 60s and 70s and said, look, here's the flows, here's the demands, here's what we can do and can't do, especially when we have a consent decree out there saying not to do these things, and we're just piling on. So I think that this is going to be helpful. I thank you guys for your time. And with that, if no one has any other questions, we'll move on to the recycling piece. Seeing no questions? Thank you, guys. And we'll get back to you with a date and time. I'll try to work with my colleagues and try to put a date and time, and also some of the neighborhood groups, and see if we can get everybody back and pass out flyers. All right, thank you. Next up, we have a presentation from the Solid Waste and Recycling Program. Take it away. Take it away, Chris. Yeah, I mean, this is all set up. So Chris Sullivan is the Division Head for Wait, for Solid Waste and Recycling, and he will be presenting a presentation that he had for the council, but you kind of got cut off because this is probably the better form for you. But go ahead, Chris.
No problem. Chris Sullivan, fairly new Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator for the city of Lowell. Thanks for having me. You want me to just go through a presentation, or do you want me to? How do you want to handle this?
I think most of us, the council that's here, and that's really what your audience is right now, Council Robinson has just joined us. I think we all have your outline. So I think that if you want to go right through it for the public that's viewing, I don't see anybody else here from the Colley Stadium Complex to give us an update on that. So if we want to go right through this, you have the rest of the remainder of time, about 30 minutes.
Awesome. Thank you. First slide is the team. We got from the left to right Greg, who's the violations person, who enforces contaminated recycling and educates the general public. He drives around flipping a bunch of lids and seeing if people are recycling correctly and, and seeing if they're putting trash in the recycling for the most part. That's me next to him, the Division Head. To next to me is Christine Mercier, the head clerk. Next to her is Jonathan, the field tech, and Brian as well, what their main function is to fix broken carts and lids and wheels and such of residents that call in when they are broken. One of the bigger pieces right now to Solid Waste and Recycling is contract negotiations and extensions. So right now, we're seeking to extend for a year from December with waste management for a few different reasons, but wanting to give us more so a fair shake at all the different hauling companies and give them a, basically a fair shake at, at RFP, which is the formal process for bidding on a hauling contract. Doing so takes better part of a year and a half to do so, to allow fair competition with the hauling companies and give us the due diligence of strengthening our contract and making sure we're getting everything we need to get to benefit the city. Some of the categories that I'm going to touch on, that waste management, make, waste management is enhancing as we speak, we're not waiting to extend with them or the end of the contract to start. We've already started a bunch of different things that are helping the city out. One, we had a re-audit on our contamination rates, which went down. We're implementing third eye technology, which is video surveillance to basically identify missed blocked or contaminated stops. They're going to be educating the school systems in, in different manners. There's also future enhancements in terms of, that we already currently have with online bulk and white good disposal, so people can go online 24/7 and basically have their white goods or bulk items picked up typically on their trash day or within the week of their trash day. Contamination rates, this is a big factor in Lowell in terms of cost. It really hits our pocketbook when it comes to whether or not we're recycling correctly. And the big picture is we can't throw trash in the recycling. It really hurts us. So the way that they establish this is they take 11 samples in an audit process, that they, meaning waste management, and they average out the, the different percentages to get a contamination rate. And that contamination rate sticks with us for a better part of a year. In the past, the average was just under 25% for the last four years. We were able to get that down significantly, and I'll show you the next slide and how that affects the pocketbook. Enforcement, how did we do this? How did we achieve to drop the contamination rate? We made sure that we were getting a fair shake at the samples that they were taking. They tended to, they tended to take a couple of days from our worst days or days that routes typically had more trash in the recycling than others, but we took a fair sample. And the idea that we took one sample from every day of our recycling route and then the compactor at the DPW, which is the overflow for the entire city. And we got an average from that. The other way is enforcement, which is Greg, which I introduced you before to. He is, his job is he basically on average gives out 25 tickets per day, gives out informational warnings, flips about 350 recycling lids to see what's inside of them. And the tickets, on average, in revenue for the last 11 months, just would be around $137,500 in income to the, to the city. The other way that we fought contamination was rejecting totes at the curb. So if there was obvious contamination in the totes themselves, we allowed the driver or the enforcer Greg to turn around the totes and make sure that they did not put them in the truck. And they continue to do this on an ongoing basis. So people's behavior would change, and they would receive a sticker telling them in detail what they did wrong. They, we received very few calls about this, and it seems to be working out pretty good. The next slide. The next slide.
Council Robinson is going to interrupt you because you have a question. Council Robinson.
Thank you. That's excellent for us to see that you're really keying in on, on driving down the contamination rate. I think that's huge for the city. down the contamination rate. I think that's huge for the city. It's, I don't want to clap about the $130,000 in fines, but it is part of the job. And again, I mean, more education, more education, more education. Be great to see that number drop down because people start heeding to the information that's being put out. I have a couple of questions. We're talking residential contamination on recycling. How much is enforcement or how capable is your group doing enforcement out in the public space as well? Because I know my colleagues and I have had multiple conversations about increasing the amount of public barrels and open green space in public areas. And one of the problems we continuously hear is how people will use those receptacles as their own personal dumping grounds. So you'll get construction debris, you get house trash repeatedly. The city vehicle pulls up, empties the barrels, and within 20 minutes, the people in the neighborhood are throwing their house trash in there. Are you actively finding any pieces of mail and pursuing those avenues too, like it used to be done in the past? Is that lumped into the finage number that we saw, or would that be separate?
That would be separate. The Solid Waste and Recycling Department hasn't actively been going after Parks Barrels. When it comes to looking into who might have illegally dumped anywhere, that would be more of an inspectional services question. We usually typically send somebody out if there's an illegal dumping of some sort. They dig through the trash to see if they can get some sort of address and then go after that particular person to rectify the situation and make sure they don't do it again, maybe a fine, et cetera. We have, we do actively go after, kind of more of a team when we find out. We clean up illegal dumpings, but we look through it to not Solid Waste Recycling, but the Inspection Services Department does that.
Okay, so it wouldn't be your department that handles the park trash receptacles?
The Parks Department actually handles the barrels. So they have their own.
I don't mean the emptying, I mean when we're seeing repeat. So they identify areas that are repeatedly being full with house trash. At that point, is that still inspectional services, or would that then fall under your purview?
That would be something that the Parks Department would queue inspectional services in because they find that there's, because they're the eyes and ears. They're the ones that are out there dumping the trash when we wouldn't know that. They would be the ones that would be dumping the trash and seeing those areas. They would be in touch with inspectional services to send out, say, somebody like Adam.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now that Council Robinson brought up the contamination rate, which I happen to agree with, it's very, very important. But you, your efforts are trending in the right direction, I can see according to the numbers, but still work needs to be done. You know, I would actually consider another position. These have ROI on each position, it's return on investment for these positions. So I would, I would consider it highly. So with that being said, now, please clarify this for me, Chris. Now, did you say Waste Management takes samples from 11 bins and uses that as a citywide gauge? Is that what I gathered?
No, it's 11 samples from 11 trucks.
Oh, okay. All right.
So they take a sample from each one of our bi-weekly recycling routes. So it's an actual one-truck sample from each day. So it does represent the entire
Right.
city as a sample.
That's why I asked the question. 11 certainly does, citywide certainly does not give an accurate representation, but thank you for that correction.
Yep.
But that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, through you to Chris. I'm very concerned about the youth of our city. I think that they learn in school and they take what they learn home and try to educate their parents. Oh my, you shouldn't be throwing that in there. That's a recycled article. So that's very important to me because we need that strength, that wisdom to educate the parents because they're not the ones in school and sometimes they forget. But kids are sharp, they don't forget. How are you going to educate the, give this knowledge to the schoolchildren? How are you doing that?
So any type of electronic flyers or printouts, Waste Management has already partnered with us to send anything out in multi-language, different languages, the top four, et cetera. We've already started composting in the city, which is something that we really kind of haven't done in the past, and enhancing the recycling since COVID. So in terms of, from the ground floor up, it is truly the way to do it because they do educate their parents.
Yeah, they do.
To do so, you have to educate them in their own language, really.
So I think it would be nice if you could make like a video on what you think is important and make copies and send it to the different schools. I'm sure schools have TVs in there and let them watch it on TV. I think that would be some type of an idea.
Good idea, yeah.
Also, if you did something with LTC and put a public service announcement, I remember many years ago, Gunther Wellenstein and myself went to the cable TV station on Market Street, and he actually did a presentation and that went on to the TV, but it also went to the different schools. I don't know where that is now, but that would be some ideas that I would have. Just that one video would enable so many people to, students to watch it, where you wouldn't have to physically go to all the different schools. Do you know what I, I mean?
I agree.
It's just a little idea suggestion. You don't have to listen to me, but I thought it might be helpful.
Thank you.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chris. I liked all the idea in term of, you know, contamination reduction, you know, going down from 22, 23 to 17.3s or something like that. It's great. A third eye is awesome. Education is awesome. I know you just said that the printout flyer translated into other language, including Cambodian or Khmer. I seen it the last time when it was shared with us. It's a lot of issue with that translation. Has that been addressed with that translation or sent it to appropriate agencies such as CMA to have that reviewed before sending it out again?
That has come to my attention, just being here and hearing that, that happens. Before we send anything out, I'm in contact with the CMA to review it before there's anything that would be published.
So the, the printout from a couple of meetings ago with regard to this recycle, solid waste and recycle, has that been addressed? Because a lot of typo, a lot of issue in that.
No, not yet. That was just
It has not.
That's just an example of translating it to a different language. Before we would make anything official, we would triple check it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so I think it's important to have that taken care of before it's sent out to, through student to their parent or before sent out to home, so that the translation that we have is correct. So that people who can read their own language will understand what you mean, what you're trying to say, what you encourage them to do. So I thank you very much.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. To expand one, to expand on my colleague's suggestion about maybe producing a video, I think one fun way that you might even be able to approach that is make it a friendly competition for the schools. Let the elementary students put together a video trying to demonstrate on what goes and run multiples. Let the kids get involved and create and direct their own version of telling their peers on how to recycle, how to, how to separate out the waste. And I think that way you might get a little bit more buy-in because the kids are going to find fun in that. They're going to have to do a little bit of homework to understand what it is they're trying to convey on the video. But we have a good amount of schools in the city, and if each school produces their own version, maybe we have a friendly competition and use multiple final versions of it. But I think that's one good suggestion to expand on. Also, with the, with the solid waste and recycling piece, I mean, we're in September, and this isn't necessarily the solid waste and recycling, although you might see some contamination, but how are we looking with the yard waste? Because that's going to become an issue sooner rather than later, just based on the time of year it is. And people will, you know, you do see some organic material getting mixed in when people get frustrated for no pickups. Are we looking like it's going to be another challenge this year, or?
It looks as if we've prepared. We've had multiple meetings leading up to this for the yard waste, coming that it's going to be every week come October 10.
14th.
14th is, is for everybody. So we, the biggest part was staffing for waste management and making sure that they had plenty of staffing, drivers that are able to jump in the vehicles and handle this arduous task. It's the most difficult piece of picking up trash, recycling, and yard waste. It's a rearload container where they manually have to pick up unlimited yard waste. So it's, it's very difficult. So they do burn through people. So they are fully staffed as of now, positive, positive, positive. We're hoping for the best. Plenty of trucks, plenty of drivers, and we're ready to go, so.
Thank you. That's, that's excellent to hear. And hopefully in the near future, I mean, again, not all our residents are capable, but if, if we can ultimately find a location that maybe residents' yard waste is, they can bring themselves, maybe that lightens the load a little bit, you know what I mean? A lot of communities do a small area that the residents can bring nothing but grass clippings, leaves, and twigs, nothing thicker than say a pencil. But I mean, that, that might lighten the load in a pinch. So, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sullivan, I just have a quick question. I think you probably answered half of the packet already without even going there. As your enforcer goes out and we enforce these things and you get 350-plus barrels, do you feel like you're seeing more purple bags out there than before? Or do you see, feel like people are recycling more? Do you think it's same habits, same time, going over the same routine all the time?
We don't see more purple bags. We would, we would definitely see a much better result. I mean, the lids are shut. Greg's out there. His presence is there. It's all about consistency to this thing, not having any gaps in employment, making sure that they know that he's going to be coming around. It's just like a police officer that drives around. You know, if they're not around, the people start acting up.
So I guess the question is then, if we're not, what are they doing with the trash then? That used to overflow, are they just compressing it better?
No, they, what they do is when this, when, when they get fines like this, they look to recycle it, donate more.
Okay.
So they look to throw their textiles in the bins that are at the schools, or they look to throw the overflow recycling at the container at the DPW.
Okay, so you are seeing better habits happen. And that, that basically is the question, are they throwing it into that? Are they recycling better? So the program seems to be working.
It is.
I know we're going to run out of time, but I just want to ask the audience, is there anybody out there who has any questions before we go into the next stage? Because everyone else here obviously had an opportunity to speak, but I don't see anybody else who wants to. So, you know, if you just want to condense this, you've got another 12 minutes? And hopefully we don't get 12 questions.
All right. So the way this contamination drop affects our pocketbook is on an estimate $15,000 a year. So that's about, whatever that is, $180,000 for the year. We're going to continue to drop that and, and get below the 10% allotment that the state allows for contamination, which would provide no multiplier to our bill. The Third Eye will continue to drop our contamination rates because it will pick up the contamination that's below the lid and what's at the bottom of the container when it's dumped into the hopper. That's the difficult part because even when you lift the lid, you can't tell what's at the bottom. But this study shows that you can further get below that 10% allotment, which is our goal. We don't want to pay anything. Behavior changes through technology. Basically, Third Eye is a camera, which is mounted on the truck. It records events. It's good for missed pickups, blocked stops, contamination, and it records different events. So it can communicate with the citizens and it can communicate with us of what happened. As of up to this point, it's, it's a lot of he said, she said, when it comes to, you know, the hauling company being at fault, the citizen not bringing it out, et cetera. We don't really know because we're not out there. This is a vehicle to help us with that. There's a video that the gentleman in the back said he could play. I don't know if he can do that or not, but he said just to let them know to play it. And this kind of gives you an example of a missed pickup call by a citizen.
Thank you for calling your city support line. This is David. How may I help you today?
My recycling container didn't get picked up today.
Well, that's not good. Let me help figure out what has happened. Can I please get your name, address, and phone number?
Sure. Jane Doe, 720 Costa Drive, My Town.
720 Costa Drive?
Yes.
And your phone number in case we get disconnected? That's 555-423-0987.
Yes.
And you said it was your recycling that did not get picked up?
Yes.
Thank you, Jane. Let me do some magic here and see what I can see. Get this typed in and take a look. So did you see that all your neighbors have been picked up and yours is the only one that got missed?
I think so. I really can't tell.
That's fine. I should have something here in a moment that will help us figure out what has happened. Please bear with me just a moment. So Jane, I'm, I'm looking at a video from the truck that came by your address earlier. I just want to make sure that I'm looking at your house. As I'm looking from the street, is your house a one-story and to the right of the front door looks like stucco over brick?
Yes.
And to the left of the front door is brick, and then your two-car garage, and it's framed by a purple bush. And then is that a jacaranda tree?
Yes, indeed.
I love those trees. Well, as I said, I'm looking at the video from earlier. It appears that they got there before you got your container to the street. I can email you a link to the video if you'd like to see it, but it looks like the driver was there about 20 past 1:00, and it looks like your containers might be up against the wall outside your garage.
You're kidding. They usually don't get here before 2:00.
That may be, but WM's routes are subject to change, and we need to make sure your containers are out to the street before 6:00 AM. Would you like me to send the video to you?
No. What do I do now?
Well, it's not the most environmentally friendly thing to send a truck all the way out there for one container of recycling material. Is your container really full, or could it wait until your next scheduled pickup date, which of course would be next Thursday?
Well, it's only about half-full. I guess I can make it until next week.
Okay. Just make sure that, to put it out by 6:00 AM or do what I do and put it out the night before, before I go to bed, because I'd be missed all the time. I can't remember to do anything before I've had my coffee in the morning.
Okay, I'll start trying that.
Is there anything else I can do for you today?
No, thank you.
Okay, Jane. Thank you for calling your city support line. Have a great day.
Thanks. Bye.
Goodbye.
Get out of bed. So that's just a little bit about what's going to be coming our way in terms of communicating with the citizens on what happened. It's, it's education, really. You know, we're not going to be hard on them and say, we're not coming back out here to get it, you know, if they're, but at the same time, we've got to slowly get to that point where they're doing it right. And they know they're, that there's somebody that has a camera on them and can send that video footage to them if they need it to see it. Outreach and education. This is an example of the multilingual flyers that we can send out electronically, paper-wise, et cetera. We'll double-check, triple-check before we send anything out, obviously. This is the enforcer. This is kind of an example of his tickets that he writes and how it looks when he, when he leaves a sticker on the barrel. Some potential enhancements down the road. We might be thinking about pay-as-you-throw program. It's similar to the overflow bags, but it would be more of a equitable stance on, everybody buys purple bags and there's a certain fixed cost that is an exact, basically an exact amount of how much you throw out on a given week. What it does is it increases recycling because people think about how much they're spending in bags, composting and reduction through donation. It decreases our costs in terms of tons and stuff at our disposal site. And what they're seeing on average is a 30% reduction on trash going from, from these to a full, overflow. on trash going from these to a full overflow program, which we currently have, to a full pay-as-you-throw program. Like I said before, it reduces tipping fees. It increases revenue in terms of the cost per bag to the city, and less trash going into landfills or incinerator. Some things that we're thinking about, what we're in the process of doing is auditing all the totes in the city, making sure that everybody's paying for what they have, making sure that we, you know, the seniors are paying what the seniors should be paying, the single-family homes paying what they should be paying. This has been done for a while, so we were even thinking about if we were to replace all the totes, it would be in tune of $3 million. We added curbside textile pickup before. We just had the bins at the schools, and now we partnered with CMRK, which we're finalizing the agreement now, and putting that up online so people can basically do what they do with the bulk items and schedule a pickup once a month for all their textiles at their house, so they don't have to go anywhere. We've already added an additional trash truck on Monday. What this does is it gives us a real good head start on the week, so we're not playing catch-up. This has been very effective for us because the, the missed pickups have been below 10 or 15 per day, which is a very good result in consideration of what it was before this. And composting. We started a composting program in 2030. It's a mandate that, that the, that we're going to have composting throughout the city. We're getting pricing through the RFP process, and we're getting a head start on everything. We're going to get some bid pricing to see what it would cost if the city was to actually pay for it. As of now, we're just offering subscription services to the city at a discount. And what we did already was we added additional hours to Tuesdays, the recycling compact at the DPW. We extended hours so people that are not able to recycle their overflow during working hours can come after working hours. The online bulk pickup, 24 hours a day. You can schedule it online, get your bulk pickup done at a very cheap rate, and schedule that online without having to call the 800 number, which has been a problem in the past with wait time. And that is it for my presentation.
Mr. Sullivan, we want to thank you for coming to our Neighborhood Subcommittee and the presentation. It was well put together, and I think that there's a lot of information in here that residents had an opportunity to look at. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question about it or before we go? Seeing, yeah, we have one. If you can just come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Sandy McNamara, 78 Bullu Street. I just have a quick question. I observed this last week. The trucks, not the one with the big thing that comes over the truck, the guy don't have to get out, the one with the back of the truck, is it good now? The one with the back of the truck, where there's a guy just taking the recycles and helping them, blah, blah, blah. I watched him, and if he didn't get it on to the lift fast enough, it ripped the cover right off. He threw the cover right across the street, emptied the barrels, and continued on. Now, who has to pay for that barrel, seeing the covers destroyed?
Do I answer that?
Yeah, please.
It's not my barrel, but...
We would go out and fix your barrel lid or anything that was ever broken if they were to do that. In the upcoming negotiations, we're actually giving an allotment for, an allotment that they would like to donate in terms of a credit to our bill, so that, for instance, they did throw the container into the hopper or broke it by their fault, then they would be held accountable for that in terms of a large credit given to our contract upfront, so that we're not dealing on this issue on a issue per issue basis.
Thank you.
Well, we've hit that time where if there's no more questions, we're going to adjourn this meeting. A motion to adjourn by Councilor Janess, seconded by Councilor Belanger. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.